Alrighty, today is June 3rd, 2025. It's 5:30. I'm calling to order the Durango City Council Regular Meeting. Could we have call to order and roll call?
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Present.
Yes.
Councillor Coso?
Present.
Mayor Protam Woodruff?
Here. I'm too busy making fun of Jessica.
Mayor Yasi?
Here.
The next item on the agenda, Mayor, is the reading of the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement.
This is a call to honor and respect Indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the N'utu, Ute, Hicaria Apache, Apache, Pueblos of New Mexico, Hopi-Sinom, Hopi, and Deney-Navajo nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools, and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within Native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step toward inclusion and reconciliation.
The next item on the agenda, Mayor, is the introduction of the translator.
Do we have the translator?
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Liz Torres, and I am here with my colleague, B. Torres. We are here with the Community Language Co-op so that we can have language justice for everybody. If you are online and you need to access language and speech, you can do so through the More menu and select Language and Speech. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Liz Torres, y estoy aquí con mi colega B. Torres, y estamos aquí con la cooperativa comunitaria del lenguaje. Si el día de hoy usted necesita interpretación, por favor, vaya a su pantalla, y entonces seleccione el menú de más o more, y de ahí puede seleccionar el idioma de su corazón. We can go ahead and get started.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is opening remarks by Mayor and Council.
Seeing none.
The next item, okay.
Is this a point where we talk about the things we've done? Is that?
No, that whole committee.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
I don't have any presentations or proclamations listed, so the next item would be City Manager Updates.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Make sure I had it the right way. Just wanted to take an opportunity to just brag about our city staff. I had the honor to go on Friday nights to the Sterling Foundation Award Banquet. The Sterling Foundation is a group of examiners that follow the Baldridge Framework. They are in Florida and Georgia, and we did earlier this year, had some examiners come into our organization. We did not apply for any awards this year, but as they were looking at our organization, the examiners believed that we were worthy of recognition for, and I'll read it, building a culture of service, societal impact through engagement, and what they found to be throughout our organization was the purpose and how much of a priority our entire staff places on partnering with our nonprofits. We offer 16 hours for each employee to have paid time off to volunteer with their nonprofits, how we work with our nonprofits in our daily workforce, and as well as the societal impact being one of the number one things we look at doing with things like our Housing Innovation Division and helping out our communities. So I wanted to give a big shout out to our City of Durango team for everything that they did. It's honored to be able to accept it, but obviously, this was a city award and happy to showcase and highlight the great things we're doing here. Even when we're not applying for an award, we're still getting recognized. So I wanted to give my sincere gratitude to our staff, as well as my appreciation to the council for your support in our continuous improvement and our trails to excellence journey. Thank you all.
Thank you. Congratulations. Page number six.
The next item on the agenda is Committee, Board, and Liaison Reports.
Kip, do you have any? Dave?
A very small one. We just had our interviews that we were for Boards and Commissions this past week. It felt a lot busier than than I was expecting, but it was, yeah, just that. A lot of great candidates that came out for the application process and glad to be a part of it.
Yes.
All right, so thank you. I also had the opportunity to sit through a couple of interviews as we continue to fill in those positions. And, you know, just another opportunity for people to participate with the local government. I think that there's been a discussion about boards and commissions and how we continue to encourage people to participate, so I just want to thank everybody who came out. It was a pleasure meeting everyone. So if this is the place where we talked about the issues or the things that we did this week, I also had office hours, so it was my first opportunity to have office hours. We met at the library, and I had a number of people, about 20, maybe 10 people with different topics, especially related to housing and transportation, which I think are things that we talk about very often on this council, and also some folks to talk about boards and commissions especially. So it was a very enlightening hour and a half or so that I met with constituents. I also just wanted to talk a little bit. I had the opportunity to go to Green Drinks, where I got to meet some of our nonprofits, and that was also very enlightening. And also the speed mitigation plan at the library that, no, I'm sorry, at the REC Center that was presented, and I thought that was great information as well. So looking forward to continue dialogue on those issues. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I had City Council Office Hours today. Had a variety of topics, a couple that were interesting. The Rink, of course, they're still showing up and really pushing that. They're working on a nonprofit and some public-private partnership opportunities potentially, so I like that they're staying creative and trying to meet the city potentially halfway. Also had a couple people come and chat about support for Downtown Next Steps. One of them was super accessibility focused, and they said, asked if I'd ever ridden in a wheelchair downtown, which I had not, and they said, try it and tell me what you think, and that the peddlits make their lives much easier. The places that have the bump outs or whatever, not the rush, yeah, this, whatever, you know what I'm talking about. Okay, great. So anyways, thought that was an interesting take on that, so be sure to come to the Engage Durango Downtown Next Steps over the next few weeks, because there's a bunch of opportunities to speak about that. So there you go.
Alrighty, I also went to the water treatment plant tour with both Kip and Shirley, but I had a pretty quiet week, but I'm going to yield the floor to Dave because I'm losing my voice, okay? So, Dave, you're in charge.
Thank you, Mayor. Watch out. Jeff, Faye, you want to go ahead with Consent Agenda, please? Or actually, Public Comment?
Public Comment would be the next item. However, no one has signed up under this section, so we'll forego the recording if that's okay with you. I'll go ahead and proceed to the Consent Agenda. 8.1 is Approval of Minutes with Approval of Minutes of the City Council Regular Meeting on May 20th, 2025. 8.2 is Final Reading of Ordinances with four items. Ordinance 02025-028, Amending in Pertinent Part of the Durango Code of Ordinances. Chapter 24, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Parking Administration and Regulation. Ordinance 2025, Number 29, Amending in Pertinent Part of the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Article 2, Section 23-30, Items Exempt from Tax. Ordinance 2025-30, Amending in Pertinent Part of the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 21, Article 4, Obstruction on Public Property, Section 21-51, Written Permission. Ordinance 25-31, Authorizing the City of Durango to Execute a Lease Renewal Agreement with King Capital LLC to Continue Leasing Suite G and Suite H of the Building Located at 900 Main Avenue, Durango, Colorado. There are no resolutions on the Consent Agenda. 8.4 is Approval of Administrative Items with 8.4.1 being Approval of the Boards and Commissions Manual Updates. 8.4.2 is Approval of a Vittner's Restaurant Liquor License for Durango Winery LLC, DBA Durango Winery at 901 Main Avenue. There are no requests for public hearings, no introduction of ordinances, no requests for excused absences.
Thank you, Faye. Do I have a motion regarding the Consent Agenda?
Mayor Protam, I'd like to pull 8.2.4 for some discussion.
Do we have a second?
I'll approve the Consent Agenda except with 8.2.4. I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Sorry. I forgot that part.
Get a second from Councillor Gonzalez. Excellent. May I have a vote, please?
Councillor Gonzalez? Mayor Yasi? Mayor Protam Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
And Councillor Coso?
Yes.
It brings us to item 8.2.4, which is an ordinance authorizing the City of Durango to execute an lease renewal agreement with King Capital, and this is the final reading of that ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 02025-0031, authorizing the City of Durango to execute a lease renewal agreement with King Capital to continue leasing Suite G and Suite H of the Building Located at 900 Main Avenue, Durango, Colorado, 81301. Discussion.
Right, discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up a couple of things in reviewing the lease. The old lease outlines that we were paying $5,500 in rent starting on March 1st of '24, and the rents jumped to $6,500, so about a 15% jump in a year and three months. And so I'm a little concerned about the cost escalation there, as well as it's a six-year lease with a four-year renewal, and I think I probably don't have enough education on what it might take, timeline it might take for us to build City Hall and the PD Building, but a six-year lease kind of commits us to something where I believe many of the staff may end up moving into a new building relatively, I mean, before that six-year. So just wanted to have some discussion on that.
Okay, Councillor Coso, do a couple of those. Mike French is not here today, and so this was kind of his item on the negotiations, so I'm going to try and answer some of those. I did have a chance to talk with Mike. On the first part, he did mention to me in regards to the lease rate when we were taking it over from Visit Durango. It was on a sliding scale, and I don't know if Barbara, you know a little bit about this, but that increase was scheduled to happen even before we took over the lease. So that was something that was already done before the lease renewal, because we're taking over the leases, because Visit Durango has now merged in, it's now the city, so that part was already something that was scheduled to happen. On the length of time, it's important to note that that building or that floor place or floor plan is actually being used by two different areas within our organization. The half of it is the City Manager's Office and the City Attorney's Office. That would be going to the new City Hall. The other half, which is comprised of our Tourism Division or Visit Durango, would not. So looking at that part, either or, we would still need that space. How that would look like moving forward, I don't know. As we look at our construction timeline, I think four years would be pretty close to impossible. I think a relatively portion of it, if I had to guess, and this is even before we're going through like full design, I think it'll be five and a half to six years before that project is completely finished and we can all move in. So I do see that the term of the lease isn't anything I'm concerned of just because of that timeframe. And also, I think, as we know it with council, as we've developed a little bit, going through in history of just finding office space at times for things that come up that are unexpected, but with this floor being used at some point, no matter what, with the Tourism Division, I think it's a good use to continue to have it a six-year lease plan.
Was there even an option to get a five-year or anything that's a little less and a little more likely to?
There probably could have been, but then I think our rent increase would have been a little more dramatic, right? We're buying the longer your lease, the less your lease payments are. Wasn't familiar again with those negotiations, Mike would be, but I think that if we looked at lowering what that would have been, I would assume there would have been a higher monthly lease rate for it.
And I know I talked to you, it looked like there was, in regards to repair for the HVAC, we discussed this. There seems to be a discrepancy between the table, exhibit C, and the verbiage.
Yeah, there's a verbiage in the lease that I talked with Mike, and it was an error. If you look on the lease in the table, it does say that the, I always get to make sure this, the landlord on the table with the lease, exhibit C, is responsible for repair and replacement of the HVAC, and we're only maintenance, maintenance being the filters. In the paragraph that's on the lease amendment, it says repair and maintenance. So I did make sure to let Mike know that we just need to take out the repair and just leave it at maintenance. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Right, Faye, we get a roll call, please.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Gonzalez? Councillor Coso?
Yes.
And Councillor Beal?
Yes.
There are no public hearings listed on the agenda, so the next item is all of Resolutions with 11.1 being a resolution to appoint applicants to various boards and commissions.
Excellent. Do you have a motion?
How do we usually do this? Do we usually go one by one and talk about them and like appoint those, or do we just do one big fell swoop of appointing them all?
The most economical way to do it is you do nominations for all the positions on all the boards, and then you get to move on those nominations, and then if it's unanimous vote, or you, if there's any changes, you don't have to do separate votes.
Okay.
You can do one vote of nominations.
For each commission?
Yeah, so for this commission, these nominees, for this commission, these nominees, all in one motion, or one nomination that leads to a vote.
Okay, so I'll do the ones that I sat on the interview commission for, if that's okay, and then someone can do theirs. That way, if there's questions, we can talk as I work. Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint Rogers Alnaritis and Ken Stone to the Durango-Lapada County Airport Commission.
Second?
She thinks she's soliciting nominations for the other boards.
Oh, doing them all?
I think they might just want to do them.
Yeah, we'll just do them separate, if that's okay. Sorry. Yeah, we're on different teams. We'll do it that way.
After you guys, but the most efficient way is.
Sorry.
Vote on all of them.
We're going to do that, just in case, because I have a feeling the Tourism Commission, there might be questions on or something, so.
So I have a second discussion? Right, roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Councillor Coso?
Yes.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Jeff Johnson with the Durango Narragage Railroad, Antonio Lucuna with Fort Lewis College, Kim Euler with the Chamber of Commerce, Tori Ocela, their hotel section, Ken Stone with the Destination section, David Rathburn with Purgatory, and then Grant Wilson, Member-at-Large, Rebecca Hewell, now Member-at-Large, and Denise Leslie, Member-at-Large to our Durango Tourism Commission.
All right, discussion?
Do I need to say the years that they're going to be serving?
Please.
Okay, sorry. I don't have that on here. I think it's on here, the other ones.
They're three-year, two-year, or one-year, so I would assume based on our sheet that we're.
I have the Members-at-Large years listed here, but I don't have the other ones listed here. I can, hang on, I have it.
Look it up as well.
Can you look it up while doing this?
Yeah, I'm trying to work on it right now. I remember Ken Stone was one year for the Destination. I want to say, let's see.
I sent an email. Sorry, you guys. True. Apologies. Here it is. Okay, got it. Never mind. I can do this. See below, see more. All right. Ken Stone for one year, Tori Ocela, two years, Grant Wilson, one year, Rebecca Hewell, I'm sorry Rebecca, I'm butchering your last name, I know I am, two years, and you're sitting here, of course, and Denise Leslie, one year. And then all the rest are the three-year, I believe.
Okay.
Okay, great. And then we had a second?
Yes, yeah, Councillor Gonzalez seconded. So discussion? All right, great. May I have a roll call, please?
Councillor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councillor Coso?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Woodruff?
Yes.
Okay, and then I think the other, the Financial Advisory Board's on the next section, because we're going to reopen vacancies for that to get enough applicants, because we didn't have enough applicants, so I don't know who else served.
So, thank you. I move to approve the following people to the Historic Preservation Board. Karen Aneci, reappointment. Paul Black, reappointment, and Peyton Deal, appointment.
I'll second.
Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Coso?
Yes.
I move to approve the Library Advisory Board. William Lemare, reappointment.
I'll second.
Discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Councillor Coso?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
I move to approve the Business Improvement District members. Jeff Overington and Maurice Leisens.
I'll second. Sorry.
All right, discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Coso?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries. We will move on to the Financial Advisory.
No, that one is next.
Board.
That'll be on the next resolution for the Financial Advisory Board.
Who did the Community Cultural Relations do the? I'll move to appoint Olivia De Pablo, Dina Sanchez, Scott Smith for the Community and Cultural Relations Commission.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councillor Coso?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
And then I'll make a motion to appoint Blake Frederickson and Sarah Schwartz to the Community Development Commission.
Second? Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Coso?
Yes.
Right, that's it.
All of them? Excellent.
The next resolution is a resolution directing the City Clerk's Office to reopen applications for all current board and commission vacancies and ask expiring members to continue to serve where necessary until appointments are made.
So moved?
Excellent, discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councillor Coso?
Yes.
And Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Just got a question. The Retirement Board, we didn't do anything on the Retirement Board approval?
We had no applicants for that board.
Got it.
There are several boards that we had no applicants for.
Okay.
So under this resolution, we would go ahead and reopen that process for any vacancies on any board that have, that still have vacancies existing.
Thanks for the clarification.
Next item would be 11.3 is a resolution directing the City Manager to utilize a public buildings electrification grant and solar PV direct pay tax credit revenues for HVAC upgrades for the Carnegie Building in Chapman Hill. Thank you, Marty, for that title.
I don't name the grant programs. Well, at least the ones that we receive. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Marty Poole. I'm the Sustainability Manager for the City of Durango, and this item comes to you under the Organizational Stewardship Strategic Plan Goal Area, specifically Environmental Sustainability and Fiscal Responsibility. So as our City Clerk mentioned, this is a resolution directing the opportunity to use some funding mechanisms to pay for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning upgrades at the historic Carnegie Building in Chapman Hill. So there's a fair bit of context here. I'll try to do my best to summarize it as concisely as possible, but certainly happy to answer questions on any of the details. So for those of you that haven't had the pleasure of going inside the mechanical room in the Carnegie Building, there are some pretty old pieces of equipment there. As you all may know, Carnegie is a historic building over a century old at this point, but it has been renovated and added on to over the years, and along with those additions comes various HVAC systems for the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. And an assessment in 2019 showed that the energy use is much higher than average on a per-square-foot basis for comparable buildings, essentially at this point, office space. And the municipal staff there report pretty significant temperature comfort, comfort issues across various parts of the building. Some areas will be hot, while others are freezing. There's noise issues with the, with the HVACs systems as it's getting older and older. Our, our facility staff have done their best to maintain those systems as best they can, but it's always been apparent that we're really on the verge of, of needing an upgrade there. So the new opportunity is what's called a Variable Refrigerant Flow System, VRF, which is kind of just a fancy way of saying it's a, it's a heat pump that you may see, you've probably seen in hotel rooms, the, like, the registers that go in various rooms and zones throughout the building. And then the refrigerant is all connected into a central system, and then that is heated and cooled with high-efficiency, all-electric centralized equipment. So what's really nice about this is if there are future new configurations of the layout of the building, you just spend not, it, it's relatively less expensive for this type of system, because you're just moving around those registers versus, you know, reconfiguring entire zones of ductwork or a rooftop unit or various other types of systems. So this is easier to configure for future configurations. A little bit of background on why this is coming to you today. In 2019, the city took part in investment-grade audit of our facilities, and the HVAC upgrade for Carnegie was identified at the time as a priority. There was a global pandemic, as you may recall, and then, which put the EPC on, on hold for a bit. The, the scope of the EPC was finalized in the spring of 2023. And at that time, Durango 9R, there were discussions with Durango 9R and DFPD around River City Hall, the 9R Administration Building, as it was at the time, and Carnegie. And so leaving Carnegie in the scope of our Energy Performance Contract at the time didn't really make sense. So we have since completed that primary scope of the EPC, and we now have an opportunity with some additional funding to perform this project. So there is a public building electrification grant, the PBEG, that will bring $750,000 to the table, and then the investment tax credits as part of the Inflation Reduction Act. The city is on track to receive just over $1 million in funding for that. So it has been a while that this project has been identified, but we have a really prime opportunity at this point. Just for some context, here we have Carnegie located just across the street from the new City Hall and new police station. So, you know, we see the proximity and the importance of keeping this building functional as a municipal space and municipal office space. So I recognize these are really text-heavy slides, but this is the meat of the detail of, of what you're considering tonight. So on the left, we have the recommended, the option recommended by staff. On the right is an alternative option. I'll go through both of these. So we have two funding, primary funding streams to consider. The $1,089,000 of the federal rebate essentially that we're getting for the solar that was installed as part of the initial phase of the Energy Performance Contract. And then we have a $750,000 public building electrification grant. So in the recommended option, a majority of that PBEG grant funding and the solar funding goes towards the Carnegie HVAC upgrade. We also would apply approximately $100,000 of that grant toward the Chapman Hill heat pump rooftop unit replacement. The reason that Chapman is kind of folded into this is because the grant required two sites to be eligible. So we chose two sites that had the opportunity for, for this electrification upgrade. So based on the estimates provided by our EPC contractor, McKinstry, this would leave for the entire scope of, of the project, a majority of which is Carnegie plus Chapman Hill. We would have approximately $200,000 to $400,000 remaining that the city would have to contribute in our budget year for 2025. It should be noted that approximately $200,000 of this is contingency. So if we are really careful with that contingency spend, there's a chance that the city could spend little to no additional funding on this project. And the alternative option would be to forego the grant funding and instead use that $1 million of the ITC, the tax credit payments towards the lease purchase financing on the Energy Performance Contract. The lease purchase is a form of financing that is allowable for Energy Performance Contracts under state code. It basically allows the city to finance a large-scale capital investment through an approved Energy Performance Contract where the guaranteed energy savings, the amount of utility bill, energy savings that you're achieving, offset the cost of that lease purchase financing. So we already have a lease purchase. It's been approved. We have annual payments due on that lease purchase. And the lease purchase does have an interest rate. It's a 3.8% interest rate, so quite low compared to what's available these days. But if we were to put that $1 million towards the lease purchase, we would reduce our future payments by $70,000 to $90,000 per year. We would also, over the lifespan of the lease purchase, reduce, save about $400,000 in interest that's associated with that financing. So those would be the benefits. However, again, we forego $750,000 of grant funding, and then we also have not upgraded Carnegie at that point. So we would still have a project anywhere from $1 million to $2 million that is, we're, we're still having to do at some point. So again, staff is recommending the first option, but we have the responsibility to show you one alternative option that was considered. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Otherwise, the resolution, the recommended resolution is before you on the screen.
Great. Do I have a motion?
I move, we adopt a resolution R 20250039, directing the City Manager to execute a contract amendment for the city's Energy Performance Contract, adding Carnegie Building and Chapman Hill HVAC upgrades into the scope of work and utilize the public buildings electrification grant and federal investment tax credits for project funding.
I will second.
Excellent. Discussion.
Councillor Kosso. The, the ITC, the credits.
Yeah.
Did they have a different purpose before? I, I assume we knew we were getting these credits back, given the, the funding, so I guess I'm just wondering. This feels like found money, and it couldn't have been, so.
It, it is not found money. These two options were always the options that we've kind of considered since we knew we would have that funding coming our way. So I, I didn't say this earlier in the presentation. The primary reason, again, that Carnegie wasn't included in the scope of the energy contract at the time and in the spring of 2023, when we finalized the terms of the contract, was that 9R was considering potentially buying it or leasing it or something from the city where 9R would occupy it. And so it was unclear if the city should be investing in Carnegie at that time. Obviously, we now know that we are going to steward that building moving forward. And, and so that, that was what, that was really the main issue of why Carnegie wasn't included, but it was originally proposed in the scope of the Energy Performance Contract. So it's always been a project that has been something that we've identified as an opportunity. In addition to the 9R, the timing of the 9R occupancy discussions, it was also an issue of cash flow, right? Because you have to front the money for the project, which would increase our lease purchase terms. And then we could have, we were always expecting this money to get, come back. And so it was kind of a question of, do we have a higher lease amount and then just put that back as a prepayment? Or do we leave this scope out of the contract and the lease terms? And then add it, add it back in when we were sure that we would secure this funds? But that's a long answer to your question. The short answer is, we always had this money on our radar, and we were always planning on going for it. And, okay, thank you, Mary.
Any other questions or discussion? Yes, Councillor Gonzalez.
Thank you. So Marty, can you go back to the, oh, thank you, Mayor. I was going to get it, but can you go back to the page where you list the recommendation?
This one?
This one.
Yeah.
So this is the option. So the Carnegie Building was identified in 2019 as needing this upgrade.
Correct.
And so, and that's, at that point, you were seeking grants?
No, it was always, so 2019, the start of the Energy Performance Contracting Process, which is a pretty standardized process for a lot, a lot of times municipalities, school districts, and other public entities across Colorado. It starts with that assessment, that facilities assessment, and then it goes into the actual implementation of the recommendations that are found. Usually, it's a quicker process, but again, I, I wasn't being facetious when I said the, the pandemic really did put that project on hold for, for two years. And so it was always identified as an opportunity in the scope of the Energy Performance Contract, which doesn't, oh, it can have grant funding associated with it, but at the, at the time, the public buildings, this PBEG grant was not on the table. But we did already utilize a $1 million DOLA. It's called the Energy Impact Assistance Fund, IEAF, and we have been capitalizing on that fund. That's been paying for about 18% of the overall EPC. Did that answer your question?
So I guess I'm, what I'm, first of all, I'm, I'm very impressed. I've heard about these programs, but I've never actually seen them implemented.
Sure.
So I'm really, I'm impressed with your ability to get this done. When Jose was briefing me on this item, I had a lot of questions, because it seems like it's really expensive. That, like, the price tag to do this facility upgrade is 1.3 to $2 million?
Yeah. So that is based on, and I have this kind of in the somewhat fine print on the bottom. So McKinstry does the, the design, the design engineering for the entire system, the purchase of the actual systems, the, they have already gone through pricing from the spring of 2023 from local contractors for the installation. And then there's the project management costs, things like that. You know, for reference, just one of the air handling units on the rec center was replaced, and that's just the box that goes up on the roof, and that was $350,000. This project has asbestos considerations, historic impact considerations, really like challenging plenum space, and basically an entire new HVAC system. You know, the alternative here would be, well, I wouldn't go to conjecture alternatives, but that would explain why.
I just, I know, just sounded like such an expensive project. And, you know, so it's mostly grant-funded, so, you know, and I'm very supportive of the transition, but does it, does the unit work the way it should, like sufficiently, without doing other upgrades to the facility?
No. So.
Yeah, that's what I thought, because.
The 30-second answer is, there is a, a very old boiler air handler unit in the middle that simultaneously heats and cools the air. It's called a variable air volume, which is a 1980s technology. And then there's some hot water loops of boilers firing hot water and some old radiators that are even older than that. And then there's a bunch of rooftop units kind of Frankenstein'd all over the building. It was, it was always added on to. It was never retro. It was never fully redone. And so that's why it's, we're looking at such an expensive project. There's really no simple way to fix what it has come to be for the heating and cooling of that building.
Well, I'm, I'm supportive. I just, I suspect that we'll see more of this. I can imagine that there's a facilities, somewhere out there, facilities, different maintenance that we'll eventually have to address. But I think this is, I think this is very created. I'm, I'm very impressed with, with your work. Thank you, Marty.
This is about as complicated as it gets for buildings like this, so, yeah.
Marty, is there any other questions? I'm sure, I'm sure part of this, the, the, the cost will be with demolition and disposal.
Yes.
Is, is, how much of that roughly is, is, is a total of the cost?
So I actually have McKinstry staff on. They could answer. They might not have that pricing in front of them. But yeah, the pricing that we're looking at here is the, you know, soup to nuts.
Right, so it's not one point two, just for like the new unit and the install of the new unit. It's getting rid of all.
The entire, yeah, the, the engineering design, which for something like this is, is substantial. The project management, the disposal, the, yep, it's the full package.
I, I was, I was, that was the point of asking the question is like, there's, there's probably a, a pretty significant part of this cost that's dealing with that old technology and how to properly dispose of it. So that, that was my question, so thank you.
I, I would also add for the new councilors that didn't see the original EPC proposal that the Energy Performance Contracting Program is supported by the state of Colorado. And so contractors are selected. They have to be, you know, approved for that system. And we can always get the state of Colorado to double-check pricing on that. So it is a kind of a semi-regulated, if you will, or there's a lot of, a better way to put it is there's a lot of technical assistance that comes from that program, and this would be a change order on that contract. And so we would still be under the umbrella of the Energy Performance Contracting Program with the state.
Great. Gilda, or I'm sorry, Mayor.
I'm sorry, but, okay, does this add to our reduction in our greenhouse? Okay, talk on that, yeah.
Greenhouse gas emissions, yeah. Thank you for that question. So one of the most exciting things about this from a sustainability perspective is it would be one of the most, it would be, I'm trying to think of the best way to describe this. It would be a real highlight across the state for what's known as building electrification, where you take all the components of the building, especially the heating and cooling, and transition them to all-electric, high-efficiency systems. When you do that, you can make better use of renewable energy. LPA's grid is getting a lot cleaner, so our electricity is getting cleaner and cleaner by the year, and it is really the direction we have to go for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. I don't want to get ahead of myself by any means, but the fact that we're taking a historic building and upgrading it with these real forward-thinking energy systems is, is a really cool headline, so to speak, for, for the project, if it were to move forward.
Great. You have any questions or comments? Alright, excellent. May I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Pretten Woodruff.
Yes.
Councillor Beal.
Yes.
Mayor Yasi.
Yes.
Councillor Kosso.
Yes.
And Councillor Gonzalez.
Thank you all.
The next item on the agenda is first consideration of ordinances, with the first item being an ordinance authorizing six ground leases with Azure Aviation Group, LLC for airport hangars W11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 at the airport.
Great. Tony.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tony Bicari, Aviation Director at the Durango La Pata County Airport. Standby while we pull up the presentation. Alright, so we're here tonight to consider an ordinance authorizing six ground leases with Azure Aviation. Right. So we're here tonight to consider an ordinance authorizing six ground leases with Asher Aviation Group at the airport, hangars W 11 through 16. Just a quick background on the overall project. In 2024, in January of 2024, the airport issued a request for proposals for hangar development at the airport, seeking to develop a portion of our North General Aviation Area. At the time, Asher Aviation Group LLC was the sole respondent to that R F P and was subsequently granted non-exclusive rights to design and submit full plans for aeronautical hangar development. That was completed, or rather, that was authorized in April of 2024. Since then, Asher has been working with us as well as the FAA as an overseeing jurisdiction to produce those design plans. What's been resultingly developed is full design plans to construct six new aircraft hangars at the airport. You can see the dimensions listed there. They vary between 120 feet wide and 70 feet foot deep to smaller hangars of 60 foot wide and 70 feet deep. So at this point, Asher Aviation has completed all the pre-construction steps associated with our development requirements at the airport. And the next step in this process is to execute ground leases for these hangar sites prior to construction. Here you can see the area of proposed development circled on the map here. This is a portion of our North General Aviation Area at the airport. You can see it's adjacent to existing hangar facilities of relatively comparable construction here at the airport. This is a more detailed site plan of the proposed six hangars. Essentially, everything you see in color would be developed by Asher Aviation Group. So that consists of the six aircraft hangars you can see of varying sizes there, as well as the orange access road off of County Road 309A and a resulting security gate and parking area for one of the hangars on the far left of the page. And here you can see just simple modelings of what hangars are. These are relatively simplistic metal buildings consistent with hangar construction across the country. In terms of the actual lease terms themselves, they vary between the different proposed ground leases. Hangar W 11 and its associated ground lease has a 35 year base term with one five year conditional option. And then the other four leases, W 12 through 16, each have 30 year base terms with two five year conditional options. These terms are out of the airport leasing policy. And so these are guided by the overall square footage of the hangars and subsequently the expected investment level in each of those. Essentially, the larger a facility is, the longer the expected lease term would be to be able to amortize that investment for improvements over the period of the lease. As a reminder, these are ground leases, so the airport retains ownership of the underlying ground. That's a requirement of the FAA. We are not able to sell or dispose of any airport land. So this is just simply a ground lease. And then the improvement itself, the hangar, is, is done solely at the capital investment of the L S E, or the developer in this case. But they need time on the lease to be able to amortize that investment, hence the 30 to 35 year terms that you see in these proposed leases. The base ground rent in each case for all five or six, rather, of these leases is 40 cents per square foot annually. That's consistent with our published rates and charges at the airport. It's something we compare with comparable airports on an annualized basis in our rate setting process at the airport. And each of these include adjustments of the base rent every two years for C P I adjustments. On the kind of background regulatory and legal side, our airport layout plan, which is really the guiding document for development at the airport, depicts the location of this proposed development for hangar development. So this is consistent with our A L P. And also the proposal from Asher Aviation develops the full Northwest area utilizing all available space. So it doesn't leave awkward dead space essentially that's unleaseable at the airport and wouldn't be driving revenue for us. They've completed, the developers completed all the required FAA airspace and environmental reviews. Those have been reviewed and approved by the FAA in both cases. A location and extent land use application was approved by La Plata County in 2022. That was inclusive of this area of development. And so really a building permit process remains the only land use step required there. In its May 2025 meeting, the Airport Advisory Commission unanimously approved the rec or recommended the approval of all six of these ground leases. And the city attorney's office has also reviewed the proposed lease agreements. From a fiscal impact perspective, you can see the ground rent listed here for the six hangars. It varies primarily driven by the leasehold size. So you can see the ground rent for hangar W 11 is substantially higher than 12 through 16. That's driven simply by the amount of square footage underneath the proposed leasehold. W 11 includes the access drive and parking area you saw in that initial site plan. And so it's substantially more square footage that's ultimately being leased by the, by the developer from the airport, which is why that ground rent is substantially higher. And then you can see there are one-time water and sewer tap fees to connect to the water and sewer systems of the airport. Those are 5,000 for each utility for the five non-commercial structures and 15,000 per utility for the commercial structure. The difference in those rates is driven simply by the fact that a commercial structure is anticipated to have significantly more water and wastewater demand on our overall systems over the course of the life of those improvements. When we look at long-term ground rent, when you look at the full 30 or 35 year period of each of these leases, you can see what the total ground rent payments to the airport would be over the duration of those leases. In total, for the six here, you can see that totals to just over a million dollars over the full lease periods here, assuming a baseline 3% C P I throughout the program. And then just kind of wrapping up, general benefits to the airport. This produces strong, long-term and stable ground rent for the airport and increases the aeronautical use of our North G A complex, increases based aircraft count at the airport, and increases our fuel flowage revenue from the resulting activity. So with that, you can see a potential recommended motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing six grand leases with Asher Aviation Group LLC for the construction of aircraft hangars W 11, W 12, W 13, W 14, W 15, and W 16 at the airport.
I got a first and a second discussion.
Please, thank you.
Counselor Coso. Tony, appreciate the back and forth a little bit on the emails. You've answered a lot of my questions, but the, the tap fees seem to me, maybe I just need to double check, but it seemed to me that the commercial tap fees were listed as 5K. The packet has changed. I put notes on pages and those pages are no longer legitimate. So I'm lost in the six different pieces here. But the, the intent, I think you put that on this, is that the commercial would be commercial would be $15,000 tap fees and the non-commercial is 5,000.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Maybe I'll just leave it at, we probably just need to double check and make sure that I read it incorrectly. I, I can search, not take everybody's time finding the
Certainly, we can definitely verify that prior to execution.
Okay, thanks. I do have one other question. Are options almost always exercised? If they get to the end of a 30 year lease, do they typically extend those?
Yes, options are typically extended. The way the language in lease is written is it allows some level of assessment from the airport, primarily driven by the quality of the improvements at the time, i.e. if they've fallen into disrepair or I S O R no longer driving benefit to the airfield, that those options could be potentially, you know, not, not exercised by the airport at our discretion. But in general, those tend to be exercised because it just extends the period of ongoing ground rent we have received at the airport.
Okay, all right. Thanks. I appreciate this. Any other discussion? Excellent. May I roll call, please?
Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Coso?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi? Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Woodruff?
Yes.
The next item is 12.2, an ordinance amending in part, in part, the Durango Code of Ordinances 1997-22, Section 5, for the purpose of amending the composition of the Board of Directors for the Durango Business Improvement District.
You want a presentation? I'll do it real quick when I see Mark Coffin pat in for Mayor and Council. As you are aware, at a study session, I guess his last study session, not the one today, but the one before prior month, the bid board through Tim Wal, Tim Walsworth, their executive director, asked for some amendments to their qualifications to become a board member in order to hopefully get more representation on the board. Those have been copied by the city attorney's office and what they recommended and placed in ordinance for your review. This is first consideration, so it gives you the opportunity to discuss and make any amendments if you all see fit. Excellent. Thank you. We have a motion.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Court of Ordinances, ordinance O-1997-22, Section 5, for the purpose of amending the composition of the Board of Directors of the Durango Improvement District.
Mark, if there is something within, it's explicitly implied by, by Counselor Beal, but I would like to make an amendment to the ordinance, would that be now be like an amendment to the current motion that's on the floor?
You would offer an amendment to the motion on the floor?
Okay.
And as the mover on the motion, she has the option to accept it or refuse it. And if she refuses it, obviously, what's on is you offer a substitute motion. It's one of those weird Robert rules things that, yes, offer an amendment.
Counselor Beal, I would like to make an amendment to tighten the radius of the 60 mile radius that they're currently proposing down to 40 miles. And I'm happy to go into the rationale behind it when we get into discussion.
I'll accept your friendly amendment.
Right. Excellent. Discussion?
Yes.
Do you want me to go in? All right. So I kind of, I've had a lot of conversations with, with Tim over at the bid. I've had some brief conversations with some current bid board members. And I keep coming back to a sense of community. And I feel like Durango is a regional, not only economic, but community hub for a lot of our regional towns and communities across the county. And that is inclusive of Bayfield and even Aztec and Mankas and Bayfield and that sort of thing. I think when we start venturing a little bit further out than those communities, you get to places like Pagosa and Farmington where it's a larger community with, with more amenities. And so if you're living in those communities, I feel like you are going to retain your community involvement in those hubs because of, that's where you live. And you're 60 miles away from Durango. I guess for me, this all comes back down to, I'm not saying that nobody could have community investiture by, by not living here. I'm saying that whenever you live and work and own property or own a business or have a sales tax or retail licenses here, you do have, I think, a higher sense of community. And I would like to see more than just business investment. I'd like to see some community investment. And I think when you, the further you travel out beyond that 40 miles, I think it's harder to really truly invest into the community. But that's just my two cents. Yes, Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Is, is Tim here? Are you here, Tim? I don't see so well. So, no, okay. Do you know why the 60 miles was chosen?
He's online.
Oh, hi, Tim.
Let's see, we'll promote him real quick.
Okay, I think they're gonna bring you in. I just
He like used the close by cities as his like target from the center of, center of town. Is what he said in his presentation.
Okay, I think I missed that information, but I don't know. Tim, are you present? Oh, we'll give you, okay. Hi, Tim, it's Shirley Gonzalez. So I guess I wanted to ask why you did choose such a wide boundary?
Well, the thinking of the bid board was just where could current business and property owners in the bid live? And so it was slightly arbitrary at 60 miles. We would be okay with Dave's amendment here to 40 because it accomplishes the same purpose. Right now, with three of the five living in the city limits, like I told you all at study session a couple of weeks back, we're eliminating good people who live in Durango West, for example, right? So we would be okay with the 40 mile amendment.
Well, thank you for answering and responding and just trying to get your understanding. And what, you know, I, I support what Counselor was suggesting with the smaller footprint. I, I, I agree. I, I know that given the affordability issues we have in Durango, it makes sense to expand the boundaries. And so I, I support the amendment as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion?
Just a question. This is first consideration, right? So if anybody on the bid board wanted to come back and talk about it, we could see that at the second and third.
You could. It will be on, all of our final ordinances do go on consent. So if somebody from the bid board was here, somebody would need to pull it from consent. But there is that option, but just to let you know that you would need to be pulled.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Excellent. May I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Coso?
Yes.
Next item is 12.3, an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 9, Response to Emergencies, Civil Emergencies or Local Disasters, Section 9-3 Definitions.
This is one of the last updates that we're doing based on the recommendation of the Munich Code of Attorneys. It simply conforms our definitions with the sections in the Colorado revised statutes.
Great. Do I have a motion?
I will make, hang on, sorry. I will make a motion to approve an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Court of Ordinances, Chapter 9, Response to Emergencies, Civil Emergencies or Local Disasters, Section 9-3 Definitions.
All right, discussion? May I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Yasi? Counselor Coso?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez? And Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Next item is 12.4, an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, Health and Sanitation Cross Reference.
This is very similar to 12.3, and then we're just conforming and updating our cross references to match with the Colorado revised statutes.
Make a motion to approve an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, Health and Sanitation Cross Reference, S Q L City. That's enough. That's enough.
I'll second.
Discussion? May I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Coso?
Yes.
And Counselor Gonzalez?
The next item is 12.5, an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Junk, Wrecked and Abandoned Property Cross Reference, Section 12-1 Refrigerators, Other Containers.
This is a slight modification to the code to eliminate a conflict with Section 10.19 of our code.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Ordinance Code of Ordinances, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Junk, Wrecked and Abandoned Property Cross Reference, 12-1 Refrigerators, Other Containers.
Second. Any discussion? May I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Coso?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi? Counselor Beal?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Woodruff?
Yes.
The next item up for, on the agenda is public comment on matters not scheduled for a vote tonight. We do have two folks signed up, one on this item and one that actually had signed up for an item that was previously on the agenda, but she signed, they signed up after item seven. So that would be up to counsel whether or not to call that person. Would you like the recording to be played at this point?
Evan?
Please.
Public comment is encouraged on city-related matters, even if they are not set, for consideration by the council on tonight's agenda. Please begin your comments by stating your city-related topic, your full name. And if you are a resident of the city of Durango, make your comments directly to the council. Do not expect a response from the council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person unless modified by council. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to city matters, profanity, hate speech, personally derogatory remarks, or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of the council can modify time limits. Please note, you must sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name not being called to speak.
So the one individual signed up under this item is Linda Barnes.
My name is Linda Barnes. And I am a Durango resident and I am a volunteer for Neighbors in Need Alliance. As some of you are aware, up till last winter, there was no low barrier warming center for La Plata County residents to shelter under extreme winter conditions. Last year, however, from December through February, there was a low barrier warming center open when the outside temperature was 25, was 15 degrees. It was open from 7:00 to 6:30 a.m. It was It was completely volunteer-run by Coalition of Neighbors in Need Alliance, Community Compassion Outreach Manasup Kitchen, and the American Red Cross, along with a group of dedicated volunteers. We were open 19 nights during that three-month period, and served 70 individuals, providing a warm indoor shelter and friendly volunteers, warm food and drink, a bathroom, and it was dog-friendly. Our city councillors and county commissioners, commissioners have been made aware of our existence as the Emergency Warming Center Council, and they have individually verbalized some support for an emergency warming center when the outside temperature falls to 15 degrees. I'm here this evening to update the city council on our efforts to find a location for the warming center for this coming season. Finding a suitable location, a room that will accommodate 20 cots, a bathroom, and which meets safety and zoning regulations in Durango is being an arduous undertaking. And we are continuing to have a good deal of difficulty finding a location. We have contacted each city councillor and each county commissioner. We have spoken with several commercial realtors and approached nonprofit organizations who own and occupy space in Durango, including faith-based groups. We have inquired about facilities owned by both the city of Durango and La Plata County. We are being sensitive to concerns of residential neighborhoods. We have followed up with at least a dozen potential locations and are working daily to find a location that meets the accessibility needs of people who might not have transportation. To date, we have found no available room in Durango for a warming center. It would be tragic to find no safe indoor space for people who do not have adequate heat or shelter this coming winter. But without a space, there will be no warming center. We will continue to search and deeply appreciate the support of the city council and the county officials, and we will continue to update you and keep you informed of our progress. For more information, we will, we would look forward to having any possible suggestions or leads that any of you have, please contact Mike Todd at Mike Todd at gmail dot com. Thanks for your listening to me.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to allow all people that signed up for public comment to.
Just as a side note, the, the person signed up was signed up online, and Evan indicated that they are no longer online.
Kidding.
Denied.
Denied.
So no other, no other people have signed up for a public comment, bringing us to the next item, which would be item 14, other new business.
Any councillor like to bring any new business? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Right? Boom.